The game that he.
Sounds like him.
Filled in for Drew Bledsoe.
Yeah.
Because I was a big Bledsoe fan. I really liked Drew Bledsoe. And I'm like, oh, great, who's this guy? What is going on? I think he's, they either, he either lost the game or. I think he either lost his first game or was like really close and he was terrible.
He did.
And at that point, I'm like, oh, this sucks. And then they weren't that great in his first season, but they ended up winning the Super Bowl. But in the regular season, they were about great.
Whatever.
Yeah, yeah. And the Tuckable.
Yeah, right.
But nonetheless, he's terrible now, so apparently.
Oh, great.
Great.
I don't know if he was terrible. Oh, yeah, it was, it was kind of pitiful the other night, even though they made him throw about like sixty plus times.
I know, I know. And he has no, he has no, he has had no receivers ever with any.
Almost impossible.
So he's, he's lucky in a way that he's, right now, he's working with a healthcare travel.
That's what makes these people so good, like the big.
We matched the chairs.
You know.
Exactly.
Everyone's ready, it's seven oh one, and I will call the meeting to order. If you could please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Today's January eighteenth, and this is the final budget workshop for Milford Board of Education. We have a roll call, please, Ms. Milford.
Catherine Ealing.
Here.
Adam DeYoung.
Here.
Megan Doyle.
Here.
Andrew Fowler.
Here.
Tracy Erby.
Here.
Emily McDonough Souza.
Here.
Gary Pellicetti.
Here.
Una Petrowski.
Here.
Cindy Wolf Boynton.
Here.
And Susan Glennon.
Here.
Ten board members present.
Thank you. Move on to public comment. Welcome to our PTA group. Thank you for being here. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs. The board encourages speakers not to express personal complaints or defamatory comments about the Milford Board of Education personnel or any person associated with Milford Public Schools. Security issues and matters relating to negotiations and grievances will not be permitted, consistent with the principles of the Federal Education Right to Privacy Act. Discussion of students is prohibited absent parental waiver. Public comment is limited to agenda items only for this meeting. It does not allow for two-way conversation between speakers and the board, but we welcome and appreciate your comments and opinions, and all will be taken into consideration. Please note our meetings are televised and livestreamed on YouTube, and we ask that you state your name for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anybody this evening who'd like to make public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item four of our agenda, final questions and clarifications on the superintendent's proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Dr. Gutaya.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon, and members of the board. We did receive an additional question that we'd like to go over with you at this time before we have any further discussion. The question reads, please provide additional clarification on the status of the Flex Furniture Initiative. What has been done already, and what is the timeline for the next steps? Please also provide information on the financial investments made thus far. So I do want to underscore that there is a strong commitment to the Flex Furniture. The vision has not wavered. I think a response to financial situations is the reason why you don't see a more prominent presence of the Flex Furniture. Albeit, in my presentation to the board, I did share that what came to the table of proposed budget items was first grade Flex Furniture and sixth grade Flex Furniture, particularly in the ELA classrooms. So with that said, it is an expensive endeavor, and we will need to plan for that over the course of many, many years. There was a balance this year in saying yes and no to programming initiatives, fixed costs, and items such as the Flex Furniture. So to date, where are we with Flex Furniture? At the elementary school. We have pre-K and K that will be completed by the end of this school year. In fact, today, we had the first full install at two of our elementary schools, Cav Pen and Jev K. Furniture has been, has been brought in, been put together, and kiddos are being swapped around a little bit for a day or two so we can install the furniture. So that actually will be completed within the next three to four weeks. Pre-K, we're in the pilot process. We have two classrooms that have been deemed pilot classrooms. We're testing out some furniture, getting the feedback from students and teachers, and that will be ordered and completed by, with shipping delays and such and I don't want to say year end, but most certainly for the start of next school year. But the goal would be to get it in this year. The next grade to be done would be first grade. That's where we're setting our sights on to completely redo all the first grade classrooms to include more flexible options for young people. Additionally, we would like to start replacing the library media furniture for it to be much more kid-friendly. I, I think our library media spaces represent what we know and have grown accustomed to in the area of furniture, and that's the hard, heavy oak wood furniture that isn't exactly six-year-old friendly. Particularly in the learning space that fosters high-quality instruction. So we, that is going to be a heavy lift. Think about eight elementary schools, eight library media spaces. Those are going to be six-figure budget line items for each school. At the middle school, the pilot provided us with feedback on what students and staff preferred at the middle school years. Unfortunately, all the Flex Furniture had to be stored away during the pandemic. Moving forward, we'd like to roll out Flex Furniture by content area at the middle school. So we would really like to start with the English Language Arts classrooms in six, seven, and eight, so that all grades have an experience with Flex Furniture. And we also believe that Flex Furniture could be different, starting at the secondary level, depending on content. So the Flex Furniture we have at math could potentially look different than ELA, but we have, we need some time to research that, pilot that, work with some consultants. But the middle school pilot has informed our selections for what an ELA classroom could look like. So our next steps there would be six, seven, and eight ELA. And then at the high school level, the focus for flexible furniture has primarily been at the library media centers. There are four phases to the foreign library, two of which have been completed. We have one more phase to complete at law. We're piloting some furniture this spring to better inform the last phase at law. And next, we hope to move to replace furniture in the math and English Language Arts classrooms at the high school after we're done with the library media spaces. So that's the status of where are, where have we been, where are we, where we'd like to go. Mr. Richatelli is going to review the very specific costs related to what we have already done and what we hope to do.
Thank you, Dr. Gutaya, members of the board. The question was, please also provide information on the financial investments made thus far. And so at the middle school, the, as you know, the Flex Furniture was piloted in nineteen, twenty school year. The total cost for the middle school Flex Furniture was one hundred and eighty-two thousand, four fifty-two, forty-eight cents. And that was paid out of end-of-year money from two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and the general budget in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. The pilot occurred in six classrooms, two in each of the middle schools. Okay? Kindergarten Flex Furniture was piloted earlier this year, in this twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Once it was determined what worked best for students and teachers, the furniture for all K classrooms has been ordered, and as Dr. Gutaya said, is being installed literally as we speak tonight in a couple of the elementary schools. And over the next few weeks will be completely installed. And that cost a total of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, one twenty-one ninety-seven. All right? Now, based on what we've learned in the kindergarten test classroom, we now have ordered preschool Flex Furniture for two of the pilot classrooms, as Dr. Gutaya already mentioned. The total estimated project cost for all of the pre-K classrooms is two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. To date, we have expended thirty-nine thousand, five forty-seven sixty-one. At the high school, again, as Dr. Gutaya said, the improvements were at the library media centers at both Jonathan Law and Foreign. The cost for the law media center in eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen, twenty was one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight oh three point ninety-five. And that was in furniture and equipment. And there was also sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars of building projects, which included the flooring, shelving, painting, et cetera. Foreign's Media Center, those improvements took place this summer. They were funded out of twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three, and they included one hundred and forty-five thousand, five ninety for furniture and equipment, and seventy-two thousand, three forty-two. Building projects such as flooring, shelving, countertops, and things. Our preliminary estimates for what will come next, the proposed first grade furniture, we're estimating, very rough estimate, of fifteen thousand per classroom for a total of three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. The proposed middle school furniture, which, again, we were, we were, we costed out for the sixth grade this year, but we've had somewhat of a change of thought of how we might implement it. But the cost of that sixth grade furniture for all three schools was seven hundred and eighty thousand, six twenty-four.
That's the cost that, that's an estimate.
That's an estimate, yes.
Both of those are.
Yes, both of those are estimates. And our preliminary estimates for the final phases of the high school library media improvements at Jonathan Law is one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven eighty-six. You can see that the, yeah, one eighty-eight, seven eighty-six, and for Joseph Foreign, five twenty-six, nine fifty-six. And again, those are estimates of the costs remaining to fully implement the changes to library medias.
When we say estimates, that means we've done our own homework and research. We have not gone to the consultants, the vendors, and gotten hard numbers, so we reserve the right for those numbers to change.
Yes. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions from board members on this?
I do.
Ms. Petrowski.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I heard correctly. I want to just clarify, the proposed middle school furniture, the seven hundred and eighty, is that for sixth grade or all of middle school?
That.
Just sixth grade only?
Just sixth grade.
Okay.
And not all classrooms in sixth grade. Um, look, that's why I'm looking in my notes.
So could you clarify that?
Sure.
We need to, we need to clarify that. I'm going to have to go into the spreadsheet.
How many separate sections are there in the school? It should be all right. Because I'm not thinking too, too. I don't think I've enough money.
We need to look into this spreadsheet, Ms. Glennon.
Okay.
We're happy to take questions while we're looking. So if you, if someone, if you can multitask. The furniture that was stored, unfortunately, all Flex Furniture was stored during, during the pandemic. Is the, is the furniture still usable?
Yes, it's back out, minus what we lost in the flood at Harborside, which has been replaced.
That actually is, that was replaced, the flood, the things that were lost in the flood were replaced with the insurance money.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from board members? Mr. DeYoung.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. Thank you for putting all of this together. It's a lot of, lot of numbers and a lot of estimates. I'm sure it was a lot of legwork. So I'm trying to understand the timeline for the Flex Furniture, and I, and if you don't have it, that's fine, but obviously, it's a big project, and it's, you know, normally, if we have something that's going to have to be paid for over the course of multiple years, we have an understanding of how many years that might be. So is it possible for you to put a timeline on how you envision this moving forward?
I can't, but it won't be realistic because of money.
Okay.
So I like, I want to do first and sixth grade next. I want to bring library media centers onboard online as well. The library media at the elementary, I'm, I am, in my own head, I think it's going to be very expensive. We're, we're looking at probably five to seven hundred thousand dollars each school.
Okay.
You know, Foreign is only in two out of four phases, and we're already at half a million. So it won't be the, the extent of Foreign, but we're talking about bringing in cute little living room spaces, soft cushy furniture that can be movable by five and six-year-olds, learning walls, like interactive learning walls, so very futuristic type of learning spaces. So I can lay out a timeline, but based on what we think we're going to get done with curriculum and programming, but the backbone of that is going to be finances.
Sure.
And I would, I couldn't have predicted this year that we'd be up against so many fixed costs that is taking us into a larger number. So my plan, when I talked to elementary principals, I said, we're baking in first grade flexible furniture. That was, that was a go in October for me. I asked the three middle school principals to cost out what, what was needed to get some more flexible furniture. So I think in the spreadsheet, it is flexed seating for four ELA classrooms that do not currently have it. So it's covering.
At the elementary level?
The middle, middle school.
The middle level.
So the two sixty is for four ELA classrooms. So my timeline programmatically, I believe, can easily be built, but implementation-wise has a lot to do with available resources.
Okay. The, do you know when the elementary school media center furniture was last replaced?
I think the furniture was replaced when some of them received a renovation.
Yeah, probably. There's, there's probably furniture in the media centers that were there when the media centers were created, when they were, when they were.
So various times.
Yes.
Our most recent renovation, can you remind me, was the Metal Side?
No, that Metal Side was the first.
Oh. No, what, what am I thinking of? Matheson, maybe?
Matheson, has to be Matheson.
Okay.
Might be Orange Avenue, it was the latest.
And that was, do you remember what year?
Probably ten years ago.
Okay.
So just to be clear, that furniture, in many cases, I can't say most or all, because I haven't done a clear assessment, but it's in solid shape. Like, it's a, a hard oak wood chair that's made to last a long time.
Right.
Right, it's, there's probably, someone will say, there's nothing wrong with it. Which is, I think, operationally true, but educationally, you just think about it, right? Hardwood oak chair, seven years old, like, there's just, our learning spaces look very different. What we know about children's play and interaction with one another and materials is very different, what we know about the brain, right? So there could be a perception that, why are you trying to replace that because there's nothing wrong with that? But so age of the furniture and replacement of furniture at the elementary is likely, to me, a less important factor as, and more of an important factor is, is, is what we have in our facility in service to our model for high-quality instruction and what we expect students to learn as they interact with one another and with teachers. And the answer, in my assessment, is no. And that's going to be a heavy lift at the library. I don't know if my half a million dollar estimate is accurate, but the Flex Furniture is expensive.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Other questions on this? Ms. Doyle?
And there, is there, I mean, I'm assuming that there's kind of a, there's obviously a cycle of when this is going in, and there's a longevity of same ideas, that it'll be heavy furniture that lasts a long period of time, and we won't need to do this in the future again, once we make this initial investment.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to buy high quality, quality material and furniture. It is an investment, and I don't think we'll do this again for twenty years.
Okay, that's what I figured.
Thank you. Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, so no other questions on this question? Board members, did, does anybody have any other clarifications they need on any of the budget? Before we move into discussion of the budget, it's a motion to adopt. Everybody's clear, everybody's good? Okay. All right, so just, just to review the process, we start with the main motion that would be to adopt the actual budget that, as it was presented. If anybody has, would like to entertain an amendment, we go to that next. And once any amendments that are made have been acted on, then we move to a final vote on the, on the package. There'll be, and you'll have an opportunity as part of the discussion of the motions to say whatever you'd like to say. So Ms. Petrowski, do you have a motion?
I do. I make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves the superintendent's proposed twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget as presented in the amount of one hundred and six million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, and direct the administration to transmit it to the mayor.
Is there a second?
He's second.
Mr. Fowler seconds. Do we have any discussion? Ms. Petrowski?
I do. I, I just wanted to, I just wanted to say a couple, a couple of comments. I know this was a very difficult budget year. We had a lot of mandated positions this time around. The school counselor program is mandated by the state, the, the contracts for all of our human resources is a, is a huge hit every year. There's nothing we can do about it. The increases in transportation and a lot of the fixed costs and energy, there was very little left for some discretionary system improvements. And I think that the system improvements that you've chosen to focus on were very thoughtfully selected. Right, the, the world language was, is very important to continue that, so we don't have a break in the, in the, in the grades. Obviously, we need new textbooks for AP. There are, there were very thoughtfully selected items, and I appreciate all the effort that went into that. I know that's not an easy thing to do. Obviously, we'd all love to be able to say, hey, Flex Furniture for everybody. But it, it's a challenging year, and I think that you, you have done a, a masterful job of savings where we can and focusing on, on places that are the most important for us to move forward. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Any comments from board members? Ms. Petroski?
Thank you. I'd like to voice my support for, for the budget as proposed and echo Ms. Petrowski's comments, and, and thank you all for your hard work in, in putting this together. Because when you, when you look at the initial four point three nine percent, you know, it's a little like, wow, that's a lot higher than we've been seeing in recent years, but really, as Ms. Petrowski said, and as Dr. Gutaya referenced, a lot, the vast majority of it is fixed costs. You know, special education costs, we have the, the contract, the contractual salary increases and benefit increases, and complying with the state mandate. So I think in that regard, it's quite a lean budget. By having said that, I am in full support of, of what you've proposed for system improvements with that little bit of discretionary spending that we're, we're putting in here. And, you know, I, the last point I'd like to make is that, aside from the fact that these school counselors that we are moving over from the S R two grant to the general fund in, in the, in the three years as we planned out, aside from the fact that it is part of being mandated by state law, I think it's the right thing to do. I think that having these elementary school counselors is just crucial, crucial, especially at this time, coming out of the pandemic, for, for kids' mental health. And so, you know, law aside, I think it's the right thing to do, and I'm just in support of the budget, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeYoung?
Thank you. I'll echo a lot of what Ms. Petrowski and Ms. McDonough Souza said. Thank you for your work on this. It's a, it's a big lift. I have to admit to having gone back and forth on this budget, because when you initially presented last Monday and referenced the point one eight percent of the increase that went to system improvements, you know, I somewhat felt like our community can do better than that, that system improvements are what drives our schools, along with staff and, and benefits, as was mentioned. And, but then I, then I started to think about it, and I think it misrepresented what the system improvements actually are. Because point one eight percent, yes, went to what you would typically consider system improvements. But the counselors were mentioned, and I think that's a huge system improvement. What, it's not an academic necessarily, system improvement, but it takes us one giant leap forward in social and emotional learning for our kids. I don't think there's an area of the community where kids can get those services, and the fact that we're going to be able to provide them, despite the fact that it's going to cost our community a little bit more than we typically would see in this budget, is terrific. And so I, I now have come around to the thought that those are actually system improvements too. And while I didn't necessarily figure out the percentage, I think the system improvements are slightly more than point one eight percent, to be honest. So I fully support the budget. As I did last year and the year before, I would encourage the administration to continually look at how we can continue to make more, more improvement, system improvements, and push the community to invest even more in the schools. I think it's the most important job of the municipal government to be able to support kids and staff in schools. I think we do a good job. I'd like to see us do a better job. That being said, I think this budget is probably what can be supported at the municipal level at this time, so I will be supporting it. So thank you for your work on it.
Thank you. So comments, Ms. Wolf Boynton?
I'd like to echo as well the, the comments from my peers without repeating everything that they have said. You know, while the, the number is, I think, larger, the percentage is larger than what we would ideally like, it is a number that is absolutely necessary. There are so many aspects of this budget that we can't control because of fixed cost items. And yet, despite that, we have been able to create a budget that not just meets and takes care of the things that we must and need include to keep the status quo. It also moves us forward. And one of the things that I'm so proud about us as a Board of Education and as a school system is that we are always moving forward in some way. And many of our programs have become models for other school districts in the state. And whenever you're moving forward, you're introducing things that are new and unfamiliar. And new and unfamiliar things can be scary. And I know that one of, one of the comments that has been made about this budget is that it doesn't look like it contains the kinds of things that were necessary when I went to school. And I know that was something that you addressed in, in your presentation last week. But I think that we need to stress to the community that our students today are not in the same environment, and they don't have the same needs that we had even ten years ago, and certainly not when many of us who are leaders in this community, you know, went to school even longer ago than a decade ago. So I am very proud to support this budget. I love that we included many of the things that we needed, that we wanted to include, rather, and not just that we needed to, and that it is, it is keeping us a leader and doing the absolute best for our children, for our staff, our families, and the community overall.
Other comments? Ms. Doyle?
Thank you again for everyone for all the hard work. I didn't know how hard you've all worked on every single level to bring this budget forward. I fully support the budget. I agree with adding a person to talent management, because I think that's a very important space. We have over a thousand employees, and it's obvious about the work that is done in the department and the support that's needed to move forward in that space. I will also echo Mr. DeYoung's comments about, a lot of this seems like not that big. I will also echo Mr. DeYoung's comments about, a lot of this seems like not that big, but it is important to look at all the systems that are in place already and that we are adding to. I think it's also important is, I think I tallied about $150,000 that's mandated by the state that we haven't really looked at and wasn't expecting, which is the cost of a flex furniture classroom or a school or things like that. I mean, and we're going to have to look at those budget impacts on what's the health, the quality of the health, the air next year. So with some of those things in mind in the next year, I agree, I would love to see a little bit more put into, if there's the capacity to do certain projects and move forward, as long as the capacity can meet that. And from there, but I agree, I support the budget going forward.
Any other comments? Mr. Pellecetti?
There are left-brain thinkers, there are right-brain thinkers, and then there are people who do budgets and scheduling, so you're really combining all your talents. It's a lean budget. It's not a Christmas wish list, and I think it was very well thought out. And I, as 35 years in the classroom, our pupil support services are very, very necessary. Thank you.
Who else? Ms. Ailing?
I'll just very briefly echo my colleagues have said, I'm in support of this budget. I know that this year was very difficult. I thought you did a really good job of balancing system improvements while trying to keep the budget as lean as possible, so thank you.
Who else?
I'll just, again, echo prior comments made and thank staff. I would be remiss to not thank you for all the hard work that goes into a budget. I know it's not easy deciding what does and doesn't get included year after year, but I do think you found the sweet spot that honors our commitments, which I think is most important, and allows us to keep moving forward, as others have said. So with that, I will also support the budget. See, no further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Catherine Ailing?
Yes.
Adam DeYoung?
Yes.
Megan Doyle?
Yes.
Andrew Fowler?
No.
Tracy Erby?
Yes.
Emily McDonough Souza?
Yes.
Gary Pellecetti?
Yes.
Una Petroski?
Yes.
Cindy Wolf Boynton?
Yes.
And Susan Glennon?
Yes.
Motion passes nine and one.
Thank you very much. All right, board members, I will decide by the end of the week about our committee of the whole meeting. At the end of the month, we probably will not need to have it, but I'll defer with administration before I make that decision. So watch by Friday, look at the, pay attention to the Friday update. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There's second?
There's second.
Do we have any, anyone who's not in favor of adjourned? Saying none will adjourn at 7:32.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, everybody.